I'm calling to order the fifth night of Arlington's annual town meeting. Okay, let's settle down. Let's be quiet. Happy belated Mother's Day to all the moms out there. Tonight, we're going to resume debate on the capital budget from Article 50, then skip ahead to Article 55 for Arlington's share of the Minuteman High School budget. And after that, we'll jump back to Article 7 that we previously postponed. And finally, we'll resume Article 26 that we started late last Monday. Once again, that order is Article 50, Article 55, Article 7, then Article 26, which will finally bring us back to the natural sequence of articles. Point of order? We already voted on 49, the town budgets. Yep, yep. Next, I want to address the process for asking, what's that? I want to address the process for asking questions during debate. Not rhetorical questions, but questions for which you actually want an answer. Lately, I've been pretty lax about allowing town meeting members to ask questions directly to officials and presenters, despite the guidance in town meeting time that all questions be directed to the chair, which is me. I've been allowing direct questioning because it can be more efficient than me always acting as an intermediary. But when direct questioning becomes cross-examination, it's no longer in the spirit of the rules. Rather than constantly policing that threshold, I'll be enforcing this rule going forward. If you have questions, you can still indicate whose answer you're seeking, if you want, but your questions have to go through me. Lastly, I hear that phones are frequently dinging during the meeting. The audio in this auditorium is already not great to begin with, so please silence your phones so they're not a distraction to folks around you. And please refrain from conversations when the meeting is in session. And it is currently in session. Now, please rise and join us for the National Anthem performed by Rohan Pingal and Miles Rosenberg on vocals and Riako Tanaka on piano. Great, thank you. And is there a microphone in the balcony, or do we need to bring that back up? Thank you, Ms. Brazil. Ms. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth on the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session. When the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, May 14, 2025, at 8:00 p.m.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you don't finish business tonight, we'll adjourn until this Wednesday at 8:00 p.m. All those in favor say yes. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. We'll now bring up the test question. The test question is, true or false, the Pope is elected by two-thirds vote? I was going to ask whether the annual Arlington Town Meeting would finish before the Pope is elected, but that race was done before it got started, so. And the motion fails, but the Pope is actually elected by two-thirds vote of the College of Cardinals in the Vatican, yes. We can ask them to change it, I think, but. And while those screens are scrolling through, do we have any announcements or resolutions for tonight? Yes, Mr. Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Warden, Precinct 8. Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members, town public officials, and others who may be present. In 2006, I stood before this assembly. Some of you were here. I think most of you are probably not here. And the purpose of that, and I was speaking not from here, but from the big podium upstairs. And the purpose of my announcement at the beginning of town meeting was that after having been elected and re-elected six times, to six terms, I would plan not to seek another term the following fall. And there was a great outburst of applause, and it was of gratitude and appreciation for the service I had done to the town and the town meeting for that period of time. Afterwards, it was, I received from the state senate, a copy of a resolution by the senate wishing me, giving me good wishes and honoring me for my service to the town of Arlington. And that had been requested by our then-state senator, the late Bob Haven. So I had that very nice little thing hanging on the wall of my house. It's quite a treasure for us. One of the things I did, one of the many things I did when I was moderator, was create the office of Assistant Moderator. I didn't just do that by fiat. I filed a warrant article, the town meeting passed it, it was approved by the Attorney General to add the position of Assistant Moderator to our bylaws where it now resides. And the first person elected to that office was John Leoni. And then I came up to the, I think, I think that first election took place in 06, if I recall correctly, and a long time ago. But anyway, it came to the election of 2007, and John Leoni ran for moderator. It was a contested election, but he won. And then a horrible thing happened. His only son was killed in an automobile accident. And I saw him at the wake, of course, and he said, "I don't think I can do town meeting." So I said, "Well, John, I will handle it for as long as you want me to do so. You let me know." So as it happened, I also presided, much to my surprise, to the 2007 town meeting, which was, and at the end of that town meeting, I was wrapping up, I think it was the last session, when the selectmen, as they were then known, come, I don't know, the chairman or one of them, came up and presented, I mean, I was up there, presented me with this huge framed document, it was about that high and that wide. So I didn't bring it along tonight to show you, but I do have the words here that were inscribed at the top. It said, "We, the undersigned, hereby and herein, honor and appreciate John L. Warden III for his service to the town of Arlington, and most especially for his..." Let me see, I can't quite see this. "Service as presiding over the essence of representative democracy and the exemplification of representative democracy as moderator of the Arlington Town Meeting." And that was very much appreciated, and it also hangs up on the wall of my house. So much for, so that last farewell, and I just said, well, I didn't know it at the time, but it turned out I was the last of this tradition going back 200 years to the when Arlington, then West Cambridge, was separated from Cambridge, moderators who operated without a lot of rules and deadlines. But I come to you tonight with another message. And that is that having served, I don't know how many terms, but 56 years as a town meeting member representing my precinct, starting in 1970 and going, I guess, until April of next year. And I have found that going forward with that, that you can tell from the difficulty I had reading even this large type edition, that I have serious eye problems. I like to quote President Washington, who, as we celebrated and observed last month, the beginning of the revolution, and a lot of it was right here in Arlington, although we don't get any credit. But eight years later, that war was completed with the aid of our French allies, and we won, and the treaty had been signed, and the liberty and independence of our country was established, and it's done pretty well ever since. But Washington, so the army was disbanded, they didn't need that anymore, and Washington gathered his officers to give them a farewell address. And as he was speaking, suddenly he stopped and he said, "I've gone gray in your service, and now apparently I'm going blind." And what he meant was not that he was really going blind, the way I seem to be, but tears filled his eyes because of the emotion of the occasion. And in my case, my hair has gone from gray to white, what's left of it. And one of my three eye doctors determined that I was legally blind, which means, doesn't mean I can't see, but I demonstrated to you, I can't see very well, and I can't drive, and believe me, there are a lot of other disabilities. But there's one very, very thin silver lining. I can ride MBTA bus for free, if it ever comes. That aside, dealing with town meeting, I've been deeply indebted to the fellow town meeting members who sat beside me last year in this and showed me where the button is to push on the clicker, and told me what's on the big screen, and so on, other things. That's been invaluable help, and I really appreciate it. But I found that dealing with it is just, is not, I can't do it the way I used to do it. This is painful for me because I've always participated in discussions, and I've always tried to do the best for our town, for historical, environmental zoning, and all those things. Tried to be on the right side of things, and we've gotten some things done. But the time has come to call it quits. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm telling you, my fellow town meeting members, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. You are in a class of your own, and I can only succeed you, sir. Mr. Keplin, do you have an announcement? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Keplin, Precinct 9. I don't know if you've all heard, but there was yet another pedestrian struck on Mass Ave since we last met. And it happened right out here. I spoke to the officer outside, and she said she didn't know the condition of the person yet, for an updated condition. However, the person was taken to the hospital, awake and alert, so that's some positive news. But tonight, we have a capital budget item for redesign of Broadway. Now, this is a roadway that's had no fatalities, and yet there's a planned spending of $1 million...
Hold on, is this, this sounds like it's engaging in debate on the capital budget, which will be taken out shortly.
No, I'm just giving information.
This is for announcements and resolutions?
Yep, well, I hope you spend the money wisely.
Do we have any other announcements or resolutions? Yes, we have a hand?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Janice Palasodi, Precinct 8. As part of Arlington's recent 250th celebration, and funded by Arts Arlington, Precinct 8 resident Nilu Muchala selected 25 significant events that shaped the history of Arlington. Each event has a card describing the event, and on the opposite side, its connection to present-day Arlington. Town meeting has its own card and tells us when we transitioned from an open town meeting to a representative town meeting. And if you read the cards carefully, you can even find out how many women were elected as representatives in that first election. Feel free to take a set of the cards that are right out here in the lobby. They contain a lot of interesting facts about Arlington, and they just might, I don't know, they just might show up, make an appearance as a test question. So grab a set of cards and study up. Thank you.
Actually, I had the same idea myself. Any other announcements or resolutions? Seeing none, are there reports to be received tonight? There are, Ms. Dashler?
Christine Dashler, Chair of the Finance Committee. I move that Article 3 be taken from the table.
Okay, we have a motion to take Article 3 from the table so we can receive reports. We have a second. All those in favor say yes. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. Article 3 is now before us.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the second supplemental report of the Finance Committee is published on the town website be received.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to receive the second supplemental report from the Finance Committee. All those in favor say yes. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous.
Ladies and gentlemen, the second supplemental report of the Finance Committee reflects the votes taken by the Finance Committee the other night, right before town meeting, including a new vote on the Minuteman Assessment, which you'll be hearing today. We're glad to report that the assessment is actually now lower than what it was in our original report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other reports to be received? Yep, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Priya Sankalia, Precinct 13. I move that the annual report of the Zero Waste Arlington Committee be received, and the supplemental report for the committee.
Okay, we have a motion to receive the report of Zero Waste Arlington to town meeting, and a supplemental report from the same committee. And we have a second. All those in favor say yes. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous.
Can I give a summary of the report?
You have three and a half minutes remaining.
I'd like to share a quick summary of the committee's work this year, and not being gifted with our esteemed moderator and several of your wit, I enlisted the assistance of ChatGPT to add a little humor and wit to my report, so here goes. I do encourage you to read the full report, sorry. The better? Okay. I do encourage you to read the full report later. It pairs beautifully with a cup of coffee and a deep desire to reduce waste. This year, ZWA is bringing forward a resolution, Article 79, regarding a zero-waste plan for the town. The idea is to get a better handle on our waste metrics so we can be more strategic and impactful in how we reduce waste. Last fall, we did a little soul-searching, strategic planning, but with snacks, to prioritize our efforts. This resolution is a result, and we're hoping is a result of that soul-searching, and we're hoping you'll support it, especially since it's literally the last article on the warrant. So if nothing else, vote yes for the environment and also for getting home before 11:00. We've been working hard on our reduce single-use initiatives. You may have spotted us at the Arlington Rees Beer Garden. Hard to miss, we were the ones recovering cups like they were gold coins. We launched a pilot with reusable cups and kept over 3,000 single-use cups out of the trash. We even tested whether beer tastes better in a reusable cup. Early results, yes. Big thanks to Natasha Warden, our rec director and all-around reusable enthusiast, who helped ensure the new Beer Garden RFP includes partnering with Zero Waste Arlington. Proof that government partnerships can be both productive and hydrated. For Town Day, we were back with our free usable takeout containers and the MWRAs water truck, which was the only truck that day not trying to sell you fried dough. Despite some unruly weather, we still saved more than 325 bottles, 143 takeout containers, and a barrel of food waste from the incinerator. We're continuing our Arlington on Tap campaign because when it comes to hydration, we say BYO bottle. We now have five new refill stations at Robins Farm Park, Thondike Field, the Rees Herd Field, and then the Swan Place one, which will be back on. And for those wondering, yes, the Pierce Field Station will be coming online this summer. And on the legislative front, we've joined forces with the Mass Products Stewardship Council and Plastics Free Mass. We supported a statewide paint stewardship program and the updated bottle bill, because nothing says excitement like tracking legislation, except maybe composting legislation. And finally, yes, we're online, website check, Facebook check, community events. We're there, usually with information, answering questions, and at least one person trying to convince you to carry a reusable fork in your bag at all times. And encourage you to request a 35-gallon trash bin. Thanks for listening. Thanks in advance for supporting Article 79, and thanks for helping Arlington waste less, reuse more, and maybe even make waste reduction a little glamorous. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other reports to be received? Seeing none, Ms. Dashler? I still like human-generated humor better, but the machines aren't catching up.
I move that Article 3 be laid upon the table.
Okay, we have a motion to lay Article 3 upon the table. And a second, all those in favor say yes. All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. That brings us back to Article 50, and it looks like we have... What's that, did someone call something out? Looks like we have our speaker queue back. Can we show the speaker queue? Okay, does anyone recall where we left off in the speaker queue? So Mr. Tremblay is next, is that right? Okay, Mr. Tremblay? And then after Mr. Tremblay, we'll take Mr. Jamison.
Mr. Tremblay, Precinct 19. I know I was prepared to talk about crosswalks and crosswalk lighting, but I don't rightly remember exactly what budget that was under. So anyways, Mr. Moderator, I have a question. The last pedestrian, the pedestrian fatality that was outside of Trader Joe's, I understand, was at night and during a rainstorm. There was another, a couple of pedestrians got hit at the end of Wallaston Ave, and I have never heard whether that was a day or night, Mr. Moderator. Does anybody know?
I don't know. Mr. Feeney, do you know?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jim Feeney, Town Manager. So the pedestrian that was struck in front of Trader Joe's was in the early evening hours, and with respect to the, there was two pedestrian collisions on Park Ave in the area of Wallaston. I believe those were, forgive me, I don't have the exact details, but I know at least one of them was in the early afternoon because I believe solar blare was at issue.
Okay, and was the other one at night?
I can't recall exactly.
Okay. And I'm aware of a pedestrian fatality in East Arlington that was at night during a rainstorm, although I don't believe, I'm not sure it was at a crosswalk. But in any case, the, I know we're getting ready to redo a bunch of crosswalks, and every time they put up, redo a crosswalk, they put these flashy yellow lights that are at about eye level. It is my belief that those are actually worse than nothing, because they don't actually address the problem. The problem is you can't see pedestrians at night in crosswalks, especially if it's a rainy night. And if I was a little more organized and had gotten here earlier, I would have had some pictures that I had taken of crosswalks in Urbino, Italy, that have these rather intense LED lights that are over the crosswalk and shine down vertically on the crosswalk so you can see what's in it. And they're kind of dim, they're a little dim most of the time, but as soon as a pedestrian steps anywhere near the end of the crosswalk, they get very bright, and so you can actually see the pedestrians. And as opposed to the way we do it now, the flashy yellow lights that are on Mill Street, for instance, how often have you actually seen a pedestrian? for instance, how often have you actually seen a pedestrian in the crosswalk when the flashy lights are going? Sometimes yes, sometimes no. But the problem is that those are on a timer, and the timer is set so that even very slow people like myself can make it across the street. But that means that most people who were walking faster have long since cleared the intersection, and the flashing lights are still going, which gives drivers the idea that they don't actually amount to much, and you don't have to pay that much attention to them. And I think that's a really bad signal to send. Furthermore, at night, those flashy yellow lights are blinding, and you can't see anything past them. So I would really strongly encourage the town that when they're redoing intersections and crosswalks, they ditch the flashy yellow lights and look at lights that are lighting, actually doing what we need them to do, which is to light up pedestrians in the crosswalk so you can see them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll take Gordon Jamison and then Anna Henkin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I would ask two things about roads. I would ask that the section, highly-traveled section between Park Circle and Route 2 be considered for resurfacing. I would also ask that the town consider using on side streets the process that was used, I think in Precinct 14 a number of years ago, where they put down oil and then a gravel surface on top of it. That seems to have worked well in that area. My road personally, on the other side of Park, was repaved when I first moved here 23 years ago, and it's showing signs of deterioration. And rather than waiting until we have to grind it and completely repave those roads, this looks like a way that we have used in the past. In my hometown, we used oil and sand on my Meister Street that I lived on. That worked out quite well, but it was low travel. The next thing I would ask is that when the Capital Planning Committee looks at large-budget items, trucks, our LED lights, vehicles and stuff, that they consider whether the replacement is because we've always done it that way, or whether the vehicle or implement or elevator, let's say, actually does need to be replaced. Is it a suggested thing by the manufacturer, or do we really need that? For example, a vehicle that's five years on replacement cycle, if we go six over time, that's a 20% saving. Same with a 10-year vehicle or item that we go 12 instead of 10, that's another 20% saving. And I know that Mr. Moore stated that the capital plan is always under pressure. Then I would like to go to page 12, please, in the report. And there's a whole bunch of stuff on the top here. So if you look at the first total up there, the $12.4 million, and then the $12.6 at the bottom, a lot happens in between, as you can see. Some of those are...
I'm sorry, Mr. Jamison, is this the page that's numbered 12 on the page, or?
Number 12.
Okay.
Table Three on page 12 of the Capital Planning Report.
Okay, so this would be the 14th page in the PDF, but it's number 12 at the bottom of the actual...
This one with all the bright colors.
The printed version of the page, yeah.
And all my markings. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for that clarification. So it's $12.4, and after all the adjustments, it goes to $10.6. A couple of those, the antenna funds, I was told one time why that is used, perhaps a clarification of that would be useful in the future. Capital carry, well, this is money we didn't spend from previously appropriated capital funds, and that's a choice. It's made. In other situations, those monies that are not spent go back to the capital fund, but these are continued on. That's for the hierarchy to figure out. Several of these represent appropriations that come, offsets that come from funds that they should, but I want to get to the next section, adjustments to the 5% plan. And there you see there are three override adjustments, and those were promises that the Select Board made when proposing an override. In the current interpretation, these are going to be there forever. So I would counsel the Select Board in their, in next year's anticipated override, that if they add one of these, perhaps they consider adding a, an idea that Mr. Moore came up with when I talked to him about this, that perhaps you add a five-year period during which that promise would be held. And my last question is actually a question. What is a log skitter?
A log skitter?
Log, L-O-G, skitter.
What's that? Mr. Radamacher? Can you tell us what a log skitter is?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Radamacher, Public Works. A log skitter is a piece of equipment that is used to drag logs. What you typically see is a very large piece of equipment deep in the woods. What we're asking for is a small, stand-on, one-person piece of equipment that helps us get logs or heavy wooded debris out of the woods or closer to the equipment where it'll be processed.
Thank you. And a follow-up on that, if I may, Mr. Moderator. There are some conservation areas in town that have a lot of large-down logs. Have we ever considered marketing those to people who could grind them up for use in wood chip-based fuel?
I haven't considered that, but Mr. Radamacher, have you considered that?
We have not. Typically, municipal wood waste is not desirable as is fear of contamination, so it's not as marketable as virgin forest product.
Thank you, Mr. Radamacher and Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Take Anna Henkin and then Mark Keplin.
All right. Anna Henkin, Precinct 6. I just have a question about one item under Community Safety Police Services in the capital plan projected for fiscal year 2028. Can I get a question about that answered?
Sure, you can ask your question, and we can see if we can find someone to answer.
All right. So there's two items under Police Services for the capital plan. One is the Normal Vehicle Replacement Program, and then there's a separate category for Specialty Vehicle for fiscal year 2028. I just wanted to know how that was separate or different from the normal vehicle replacements, if it was some sort of different vehicle or what we were planning on getting at that point.
And is this in the vote language or in the report?
It's in the capital plan in the appendix on page 27.
Okay.
Exhibit 2, fiscal year 2026 through 2030, capital plan.
Mr. Moore, do you have an answer to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Moore, Precinct 14, and Chair of Capital Planning Committee. The specialty vehicle is actually in FY 2028, and I believe it's a parking control vehicle, but I'm not certain. The, maybe if, I'm getting a no, so I have it wrong apparently from the chief. Do you want to go into things that are not in this year's capital budget, Mr. Moderator?
There's no answer to that within this year's, the FY 26 budget?
That item is not in this year's capital budget. It's in the capital plan for three years from now.
Okay. So that would be out of scope unless, Ms. Henkin, unless you want to tie it to scope somehow, if you have some...
No, that's all right. I can come back with that question in 2027 or 2028. It's fine. All right.
Great, thank you. We'll take Mark Keplin and then Vincent Bodwan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Actually, there were two items that interested me. The first one is Item 5.10, $279,000 for Broadway Complete Streets redesign. And I'm troubled by this because I live half a block from Broadway, and there is no fatalities that have happened on that street that I know of. And the number of serious crashes are few in number also, as far as the data I could find online from state records. It used to be that safety was a priority for spending money on roads, but this one seems to be a cosmetic improvement, and I don't think that's a good reason to spend money. I think when there are fatalities and serious injuries on Mass Ave, addressing those should be our priority. I believe this $279,000 is the first portion of a $1 million grant from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for a redesign plan. So that's a $1 million to redesign, and then it's on the town of Arlington to take care of right-of-ways, but it would be millions of dollars more to actually do any construction. And I suspect the design will remove parking from Broadway, which is harmful to businesses. And so, you know, even if we're doing a cosmetic upgrade to the road, it's not going to attract businesses if there's parking challenges for them to get customers. So I'm hoping we can better use that money to make our roads safer, and I move that that item be struck from the budget and the funds returned to the capital budget.
So we have a motion to strike item Row 5.10.
Yes.
From the vote language of Article 50 from Capital Planning. So, Mr. Cunningham, is there any issue with, I know with the budgets, there's restrictions on what Town Meeting can do as far as amendments in terms of, like, cannot strike individual lines from budgets in the town budgets? Is there any such restriction for the capital budget? Can you speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Counsel. No, there is not any such restriction in capital.
Okay, thank you. And so, and presumably, Mr. Keplin, we just renumber everything after that?
Yes.
Sure, okay. I think that's sufficiently short. I'm not going to count the words to see if it's less than 20. I think it's around there. And we have a second for the motion to strike Item 5.10 and renumber the rest from the vote language of Article 50. Okay, so that amendment is now before us. We'll vote on that first before we, we'll have a debate on everything, and then we'll vote on that as we ordinarily do with amendments, and then we'll vote on the main motion, either amended or unamended.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just had a question on what's listed as Item 5.20 on Page 5. The school solar array, could I have more details on that? Which school it's going on, what the lifetime of these panels are, if this is a replacement, or, and, you know, how are the efficiencies going on these panels, and how much do they actually contribute to the electric budget for the buildings?
Mr. Feeney, do you have an answer to that question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Feeney, Town Manager. The school solar array in the FY 26 capital budget is for the Hardy School. That will be a new array.
Okay. Thank you. So there's none there now? Mr. Feeney?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Great, thank you. So we'll take Vincent Bodwan and then Eugene Benson. An apology is to Dr. Henkin for misidentifying her title. Mr. Bodwan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Vincent Bodwan, Precinct 1. I live near Broadway, but I believe that the whole town would benefit from rethinking some of our streets that were laid out many decades ago prior to cell phones, prior to SUVs. There might have been streetcars. It was a whole different era, and I think it's nice to take an opportunity to take a street and a corridor in a neighborhood that could use a little bit of love and help them improve. Complete Streets is a really interesting program. It looks at the street as a way of moving for all forms of transportation, whether it be automobiles, whether it be bicycles, whether it be pedestrians, whether it be people riding public transit, and Broadway has an important bus line on it. So I would certainly urge you to keep this money in the budget. We, the town is asking us to spend $279,000 as a 20% match for $1.1 million. That is a grant coming from the NPO. And so that's a great amount of leverage. It's a great opportunity to get some money to do something nice with one of our streets. But I do want to emphasize a point that the previous speaker made, that we may be asked in future years to come back and appropriate more money to a redesign, to actually build something if we decide that we want to do so. So keeping that in mind, I'd urge you to vote against the Cap Plan Amendment. This money has been through quite a bit of process, including the Capital Planning Committee giving it careful consideration. I showed up to one of their meetings, and I was told that nobody ever shows up to one of our meetings, and so I'd just like to say thank you and appreciate your voting down the Cap Plan Amendment.
Thank you. We'll take Eugene Benson next, and then Pi Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eugene Benson, Precinct 10. I have a question about Table 4 on the capital plan, Page 13 on paper, Page 15 on the PDF. Table 4 shows negative variances from the budget for FY 27...
Did you speak closer to the microphone?
Sorry. Table 4 shows deficits from the budget for FY 27, 28, 29. Can someone from the capital plan speak about the thinking behind running those deficits in those years?
Mr. Moore, do you have an answer to that?
So on Page 13, the table shows deficits in the capital plan for 2027, 28, 29. The reason they're there is that it's not worth fixing them right now. Between the time, between now and the time those things become the capital budget year, cost estimates will change, needs will change, some things will disappear, other things will show up that we don't even know about today. And in past years, I think we made this change two years ago, before that, we would try to kind of change everything around to make it look all nice and pretty and zero across. And what we found is we were just undoing all that every year because of the changes. So what we do now is we make sure that the capital budget year, that's the money we are actually asking Town Meeting to spend, meets the budget, and that the five-year plan summed across the years meets the budget. And then as each budget year comes around, we sometimes have to move things around to make sure we meet the budget in the current year, which is when we're, the only time we're actually spending money.
May I ask a follow-up question? So for FY 2027, which shows the $300,000 deficit...
Correct.
If it looks as if it's not going to work out, who makes the decision to pull some of the things that would either be bought with cash or bonded?
The Capital Planning Committee.
And when, how do you know when to make that decision?
Mr. Moore, how would the capital planning know to make that decision?
So as we build the capital budget each year, we add it all up, we compare that to 5% of the manager's budget, and that's what tells us the number we have to meet. So anything that doesn't fit has to be removed, delayed, or reduced. And then we work with town management, the department heads, to figure out what those things are.
So the Finance Committee has told us to expect a $13.5 million deficit in fiscal year 2027 and $21.5 in 2028. How is that taken into consideration in putting together this budget?
Mr. Moore?
The expected deficits exist because the town budget...
Right.
Doesn't match up...
Yes, we know why.
To what we have, right? But this is based on 5% of the town budget. So I guess one way to look at it is the capital budget, like everything else in the budget, is a contributor to that deficit. And if the town had to change the budget, to reduce it, to make that deficit go away, the 5% limit would go down, and things would have to be delayed or removed from the budget.
So there was no thought about pulling some things out for FY 2027, waiting to see if there is an override and if it passed?
No, because in the past, we've found that it didn't really help to try to move things around to make every year look zero. We just make sure that in the budget... We just make sure that in the budget year, we're meeting the budget target.
Okay, thanks. I have one other set of questions, if I may. If you go to page, whoops, 35 on the paper copy, 37 on the electric copy. For Jarvis House building envelope, it shows $65,000 in 2023, nothing in 2024 or 2025. And then if you go to page 39, where I'm going right now, and look at Jarvis House. It was built in 1815. It last year of a major renovation didn't exist. And there's no estimated year of completing. Now, you can't do this now, but if you walked outside and walked down the street and looked at Jarvis House, you would see that it's falling apart on the outside. And I just wondered why I can look through the entire capital plan for this year and the next few years and see nothing about a building that's falling apart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Feeney, Town Manager. I'll admit, sitting directly behind you, I was unable to hear the question, Mr. Benson. My apologies.
That's all right. So Jarvis House, 1815 circa building, has never been renovated and there's nothing in the plan to do any work on it. But it's falling apart. You can walk by the outside and the siding is in really bad shape. You can see where there's water damage on the outside. And yet there's nothing for this year or later years toward even, you know, just protecting the building, let alone making it better. I'm just wondering why that, I can't find anything in here about protecting Jarvis House.
Mr. Feeney?
Okay, thank you. So there was, as you pointed out, some money appropriated in fiscal year 23. The Community Preservation Act Committee also had some money appropriated for the Jarvis House a few years ago. That led to an assessment conducted by a historic preservation architect to help guide those next steps. Among the first steps, though they're not viewable from the street, were some emergency repairs that were already made to prevent some water intrusion, but also some wildlife intrusion into the building. So some repairs have already been made. We did just recently finish insulation of the building and the installation of new heat pumps so that we can now remove the window air conditioners from the building and replace storm windows and undertake the next phases of repairs at that building.
Okay, I'll just suggest that town meeting members take a look. Take a walk by Jarvis House on Pleasant Street. And if you think it needs to be repaired, let the select board know. Thank you.
Okay, so next we'll take, we have point of order?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charles Foskett, Precinct 10. I would like to suggest that the discussion that we just had, which was a very good discussion, flies in the face of your ruling earlier when there was a woman speaking here, asking about a police traffic or police vehicle item in 2028. And you ruled it as not in the scope. And I think the capital plan is an integral part of the rationale for why we should vote for the budget for 2026 because the entire scheme of borrowing and spending, as pointed out by Mr. Benson, is integral to the five-year plan. We just spent five, five minutes talking about it. So I think that your calling that speaker's question out of scope was not correct. Thank you.
Under the town budgets, you're saying? Under the, like, under the, the police budget, under?
Yes, it was under the police budget. It was a, it was a vehicle that she had a question about in 2028, I think.
Got it, understood. Thank you for the feedback. We'll take Pi Fisher next and then Al Tosti.
Pi Fisher, Precinct 6. I move the article and all matters before it.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate on Article 50, all matters under Article 50, which includes the, the Kepline Amendment. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 50, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. So we will bring up a vote on the Kepline Amendment. I don't know if we have a slide for that yet. And while we're bringing that up, I'll just describe it. Ms. Brazil, do we need that in writing at this point? Do we need the Kepline Amendment in writing? Or, you have it, you already have it, fantastic. So I'll just describe it. It's, it would strike item 5 dot 10 from the, from the vote language of Article, the main motion of Article 50. 5 dot 10, which is $279,000 for the Broadway Complete Streets redesign. So if you're in favor of that amendment to strike that line, and then we'll just renumber the ones after it, you would vote one for yes to accept the amendment. Okay, voting is now open. So if you want to make that amendment to strike that line from the, from the capital budget, press one for yes and two for no. And three to abstain. And the amendment is a majority vote because amendments are always majority votes as subsidiary motions. Okay, voting is closed. And the motion fails. 35 in the affirmative, 165 in the negative six abstentions. That takes us to a vote on the main motion as recommended in the Finance Committee report or reports. Let's see. This has authorized the nine items of the capital budget listed in the Finance Committee's vote language for Article 50. I'm not going to run through them all because there's a lot of detail there. But if you're in favor, so let's bring up a vote now for the main motion of Article 50. So if you're in favor of the capital budget, press one for yes. If you're opposed to the budget, press two for no. Or three to abstain. And this is a two-thirds vote. This is the main motion under Article 50. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes. 199 in the affirmative, seven in the negative, five abstentions. It's a two-thirds vote. Okay. Ms. Deschler, you have a motion for us?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. I move that the undisposed of articles from 51 to 54 be laid upon the table.
Okay, and so we have a motion to lay the, the undisclosed articles from 51 to 54 on the table, which is effectively just Article 52 at this point. This will allow us to go forward to the Minuteman budget and Arlington's share of it in Article 55. So all those in favor of tabling Article 52, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, say no. Article 52 is now on the table. And that brings us to Article 55. Mr. Tosti, do you want to lead us off?
Al Tosti, Precinct 17, and member of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends favorable action for the $8,347,090, which is in the supplementary report of the Finance Committee, which is a revision down from the original red book. Minuteman per pupil spending is still high. But after meeting with her, the superintendent and the business manager, we feel confident that the school is moving in the right direction. And also like to note that this is the second year where our assessment has gone down. I'd like to introduce Sarah Montague, our school committee rep. Wave your hand if you have any complaints, you go to her. And I'd also like to introduce Superintendent Driscoll of Minuteman Regional School District.
All right, welcome Superintendent Driscoll. Before you start your remarks, can we just open the speaker queue? So we have that going so folks can, let's see, we'll clear the speaker queue. And as soon as this list clears, it is now, it will be open for you to request to speak. Okay, it is now clear. Superintendent Driscoll, you have the floor. Welcome to Arlington Town Meeting.
All right, thank you. It's a pleasure to meet all of you. I also like to welcome up our business manager, Nikki Andrade, who'll be assisting today. Overall, we are presenting to you, as we presented to your Finance Committee, our overall recommended budget and the assessment for your town. Next slide, please. You'll see that, like most school districts, our budget reflects our values. Not only what happens in our academic classrooms and our vocational programs, but also on the sports field, in our supplemental programming, in our school activities. Next slide, oh, thank you. Our overall operating capital recommendations increased 2.99% above FY '25. In, next slide, please. In summary, our capital recommendation was reduced by 21% compared to FY '25, which is a little confusing. We had an energy savings lease from our old building that was fully paid off in FY '25. So that was shifted so that we could increase our OPEB, which is why there's an increase of 5.56% in our operating recommended cost. And overall, the building project debt remains the same. It's about negative .84. Next slide, please. So right now, the FY 2026 assessment to Arlington is 2.51% below FY '25, which is a little over $8 million. I'm going to hand it over to Nikki to do a little bit more of a breakdown for all of you.
Good evening. Our budget without
Just name and title, please.
Oh, Nikki Andrade, Business Manager, Minuteman.
Thank you.
Without the building project debt, just a little bit over 6.6 million. With the building project debt, which is excluded, it's the $8,347,090. And a little bit more about our budget drivers.
Next slide.
Next slide. 3% collective bargaining agreement for our teachers was agreed upon, plus steps in levels. We also assessed our supplies and materials to ensure our vocational students could, could continue on with the hands-on learning that, you know, they use all of the materials that we use in our day-to-day lives. We've had some increases to our insurances. And we've also had a new bid for our transportation that came in just hot, just over 5% this year. But again, as Superintendent Driscoll mentioned, the big driver for our operating increase is our $300,000 increase to our OPEB trust fund. This was planned by our OPEB Study Committee back in 2020. We created a group and they decided this was the proper time and the most fiscally responsible time to our member towns to increase this contribution, which will be our new baseline. And we will continue to fund it an additional 5%. We are about 8% funded right now on a $22 million liability. We have some other capital needs for our building, plus a capital stabilization fund. And we like to remind our member towns in particular that our debt service on our athletic field, which is about $115,000, is funded by our facility's revolving account in our rentals that we rent the field out to, as promised. Our overall enrollment is strongly tied to our budget. We have 669 students, which is our blue line. Our member town students, 632, our red line. And our non-member students, 37, which is our green line. To break out Arlington's budget a bit further, there are 198 students, which is about 30% of our population. 57 seniors, 56 juniors, 42 sophomores, and 43 freshmen. The incoming freshman group, there were 69 students that applied. 59 have accepted and 10 have declined. So we will say somewhat stable enrollment as your 57 seniors will be graduating out this year. And just a further breakout, despite the 3.5% increase in the four-year rolling average, which is a strong correlation to our budget, there is a 2.5%, 2.51% decrease in the Arlington budget this year. Thank you so much, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I would just like to emphasize that last slide. We have more students from Arlington that we are servicing, and the assessment went down. Just want to repeat that.
We're, yeah, we're not used to costs going down on anything lately, so that's. Okay, so let's switch over to the speaker queue. And, excuse me, to lead us off, Carmine Granucci. And then, what's that?
Pass.
Andrew Greenspan?
Pass.
Andrew Fisher? And then following Mr. Fisher, Gordon Jamison.
Andrew Fisher, Precinct 6. I'm extremely disturbed by the policy of not letting the kids that used to be the ones that needed and had access to vocational training, partly under the reasoning that the tools are dangerous. Speaking as someone who supervised construction at Roxbury for youth build for three years, a lot of students were court-referred. We had no accidents. Do you have any data on accidents before 1993, when this policy went in?
Superintendent Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I actually have information about our acceptances. We have accepted 100% of the students from Arlington for at least the last two years. There have been no barriers to access. So in that aspect, they are all welcome. We hope more come.
The reports in the Boston Globe about the lawsuit, which include quotes from the Pioneer Institute for some reason, say that the students who have low grades are counseled not to even apply.
I wouldn't say that. Oh.
Is there a question in that, Mr. Fisher?
I'm explaining why I'm voting no. I think it'd be much more fair and equitable to have all these classes, welding, plumbing, carpentry, taught where the students are that need it. Do you have any data as to how many students attend the vocational school and end up in the trade? My experience is I had one student, Arlington student, who attended there, who on his, what do you call it, the co-op, the week off, week on. He went to college, he went to, got his master's. He manages a trust fund. I know another person similar, a neighbor. Do you have any data on how many people attend and then end up actually in the trade?
I don't have any such data. Superintendent Driscoll, do you have any data?
Sure. In a trade straight out of high school, I would say about half of our students do because half of our students have programs, are in programs that are made to work in the trade immediately after, like plumbing or electrical, so on and so forth. We now also have programs that require high-tech additional skills, like environmental engineering, those type of things. So they have different pathways. But I am, I'm welcome, I welcome you or anyone else to come visit the school if you want to look at some specifics about what our kids do and where they end up. There are no barriers to access at Minuteman Regional School District.
Do you have any data on plumbing, welding, electrical, and carpentry as to how many of the students continue on in their trade after, or a trade even, after high school?
Superintendent Driscoll?
I absolutely do. I did not bring our enrollment or placement numbers for all 19 of our programs with me here tonight. But I'm happy to help you with that offline if you want to reach it.
I would, I would vote a no vote on this and urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take Gordon Jamison next and then Michael Ruderman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12, welcome. I recalled, when you put up the transportation number, that many years before your ascendance to the superintendent position, that the state had promised 100% coverage of transportation for regional schools. And I believe Mr. Garberly was in the—in the room, so I just wanted to come up and say that is still something I think that the state should consider. Thank you.
Okay. Michael Ruderman, and then Paul Schlickman.
Pass.
Paul Schlickman, pass. Seeing no more speakers in the queue, we can proceed to a vote on the main motion. So while we're bringing up that vote, this is a vote to appropriate $8,347,090 to pay for Arlington's share of the cost of the Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical High School District budget. So let's bring up the—the vote screen. And so if you're in favor of that appropriation, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed to that appropriation, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. And this is a majority vote. Okay, voting is closed. And the motion passes. 202 and the affirmative for negative 2 abstentions. It is a majority vote. Ms. Deschler?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. I move that the undisclosed of articles from 7 to 54 be removed from the table.
Okay, we have a motion to remove all those articles—it's basically all the articles that are on the table except for Article 3 at this point, and we have a second. So this would bring us back to Article 7, which we had postponed at some point in the distant past. So all those in favor of removing all those articles except for Article 3 from the table, say yes. All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. That brings us to Article 7. So I don't believe I have—actually, because we have—we're essentially doing a reset of this article, because there was a new supplemental report from the Select Board. So—and it's been—I think it's been almost two weeks now, since about a week and a half since this article first came—actually, yeah, it was the first night of Town Meeting. I think it makes sense for us to just reset the speaker queue at this point, because the subject matter has actually changed. The recommended vote has changed, so we're dealing with just new content at this point. So let's bring up the speaker queue. Can we switch over to the speaker queue? And we'll clear this, so when this queue is cleared, you'll be able to request to speak under the new and improved Article 7. And—yeah, and so did you want to introduce, just briefly, like to call her up, Ms. Mahan? Or Mr. Feeney? Just to remind folks where we are. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Daya Mahan, Chair of the Select Board. I would ask that Talia Fox, our Sustainability Planner, address the board, address the meeting.
Okay. Ms. Fox, do you want to just introduce what we're doing here now since the Select Board's supplemental report? So we'll just reintroduce this article. Mr. Kepline, point of order? Have you tried to request to speak? Are we looking at the right queue? Oh, there it goes. I say—I—I'm not sure—we'll look into that, Mr. Kepline. I'm not sure why that was not registering here, but thank you. Ms. Fox, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Talia Fox, Sustainability Manager. I'm just here to remind everyone about Article 7. So the Energy Revolving Fund, if established, would enable Arlington to leverage rebates, credits, and incentives for energy efficiency, clean energy, and electrification projects. Monies from these projects deposited into this fund could be used to offset the costs of similar future projects. I'd like to highlight two key reasons for this fund. The first is timely matching grants—timely matching funds for grants for supporting the town's climate goals. Grant opportunities arise throughout the year that require a match from the town, and it can be challenging to commit matching funds for grant opportunities that arise at times that don't align with the capital planning cycle or town meeting. The ability to leverage the revolving fund for these circumstances would make the town more competitive for these opportunities. Some examples are the Green Communities Grants and the newly established Climate Leader Communities Grants that the town is now eligible for. A second key reason for this fund is to address challenges related to how the town currently accounts for project-related rebates and incentives, which currently delay projects or prevent projects from being completed. For example, the town is hoping to purchase a third electric school bus for the school's fleet. We secured a federal grant to cover half of the cost of the bus, and the school's capital budget is covering another portion. The remaining portion will come from a state incentive. I learned earlier this year that the incentive cannot be set up as a grant account as anticipated. It would have to be deposited into the general fund. That means we have been unable to establish a purchase order for the bus, and the bus has not been able to be ordered, delaying the arrival of it, and it has resulted in the increase of the price of the bus. So if the revolving fund existed, we could have filled that gap from the fund and avoided the delay and cost increase. And the incentive that we will receive once the bus arrives will then be deposited into the fund and used to offset the purchase of the next school bus or other project eligible for a similar rebate. I just want to close by reminding Town Meeting that the town manager would authorize all expenditures from this fund, and that the Capital Planning Committee would need to approve spending over $50,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So from the speaker queue, let's take Amos Meeks and then Mark Kepline.
Hello, my name is Amos Meeks, Precinct 3, and I'm also a member of the town's Clean Energy Future Committee. I am speaking in support of this article. I think that the question before us is really, is a revolving fund the right tool for this? You can see in the provided materials examples of many other revolving funds in the town. They're quite common. And in what we choose to use revolving funds for, I see three main features. First, they are funded by a revenue-generating program and use that revenue to put that back into that program and further support it. Second, they allow for flexible spending to support that program without needing to wait and go through other sorts of approvals and things that might take time and jeopardize the goals of those programs. And then, third, establishing a revolving fund allows us to put restrictions, require reports, put on caps, and these sorts of things. These are many of the commonalities I've seen between these revolving funds. And so the question is, for these sorts of activities, do these apply? And from what I've seen, I believe that they do. These sorts of energy efficiency programs and green energy programs that this would support are often revenue-generating through incentives and sort of net cash benefit for the town. Through a combination of these incentives and rebates and savings, we end up in a better financial situation due to these programs. And then, second, as Talia mentioned, flexible spending, being able to use this money quickly when needed to respond to these sorts of programs and incentives, allows us to get more money and support these activities, and again, further benefit the town. And then, finally, of course, using a revolving fund allows us to put reasonable restrictions on this, such as the approval required from the Capital Planning Committee and reporting to Town Meeting, and at Town Meeting, being able to, if we wanted, get rid of the revolving fund if we thought that it was not—no longer serving its purpose or benefiting the town. And so I think that considering this, if you believe that electrification is a good long-term goal, and if you like spending less taxpayer-town money to achieve it, then I think it is worth supporting this article. I believe that electrification is necessary in order for us to achieve net zero, as we've made our goal in many places. And that means that the sort of projects that this is supporting will happen at some point, now or later. What this revolving fund allows us to do is to do more sooner and to access the incentives and non-town funds that are available to do these sorts of projects. So everybody wins. With that, I do want to ask some questions, Mr. Moderator. First, I would like to get a perspective from the town on whether these projects are generally sort of a net cash benefit, and would it help the town's financial situation to get more of these projects?
Mr. Feeney, do you have an answer to that? Or Ms. Fox?
Talia Fox, Sustainability Manager. Yes, many of these projects do generate money for the town, so for example— for example, the solar arrays that we will be purchasing now through the recent approval of the capital plan will be generating over half a million dollars in credits over the lifetime of the system. And a lot of the offset will actually just go back onto the bills for the town. Some of the credits will be put—would be put into this kind of a revolving fund, but a lot of them are just going to discount our bills. We would also use the revolving fund for energy efficiency projects, which by their nature are designed to reduce the costs of the town. And we would also use this fund to purchase electric vehicles, which have been shown to have lower maintenance and fueling costs over their lifetimes.
Thank you. And my final question, is the $50,000 limit before going to the Capital Planning Committee sufficient to achieve—to get many of these projects and achieve a lot of the goals that you're looking for?
Ms. Fox, do you have an answer to that?
I do believe the $50,000 threshold for going to the Capital Planning Committee is reasonable. I think in a lot of the circumstances where we'd need that amount of money, we would have a bit of heads-up, say, a month for a grant opportunity. And so from what I understand, it would not be too onerous to convene the committee in that timeframe in order to approve funds from the revolving fund.
Thank you. I encourage everyone to vote yes on this article.
Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Kepline, and then Christopher Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Kepline, Precinct 9. I'd like to thank Mr. Meeks for asking the important questions about whether or not these funds are actually saving Arlington residents tax money. I'd actually like some specific answers with numbers in them, if they're available, how projects have gone and how much money the town's people have saved with existing projects, and make—give us some guidance on whether or not to continue this path. I know from electric school buses, they're far more expensive than conventional diesel-powered buses, and they don't work so well in cold weather. Even Tesla has advised owners to use the electric heated seats, because heating the cabin drains the batteries very quickly. And a school bus has a very large cabin, and that it consumes quite a bit of energy whenever the the school bus is used. So, Mr. Moderator, I—does anybody have any specific numbers on the positive or negative cash flow as a result of these projects?
Let's see. Mr. Feeney or Ms. Fox, do you have, like, data, like, evidence from the past that gives us confidence that this would save money in the future?
Talia Fox, Sustainability Manager. So we do have some data specifically from our solar arrays, so that's a great example of a project that we could use this fund for. So we have currently arrays that generate around $100,000 a year in credits, so that's offsetting our bills. As I mentioned, the two arrays that we're hoping to purchase would reduce the town's costs over the lifetime of the systems by over half a million dollars. I—and as for the—the electric vehicles, they have been shown to—to be—to have lower maintenance and fueling costs. We are currently in the piloting phase for our electric school buses, so we don't have the complete data for that pilot period just yet. But as far as we can tell, you know, those buses are reducing pollution. They're reducing maintenance costs and fueling costs, but I don't have specific numbers right now.
Mr. Moderator, could you tell me what the battery replacement cost is for these electrical vehicles and for school buses?
Ms. Fox, do you have an answer to that, about the battery replacement costs for the vehicles?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't have an estimate for that off the top of my head right now.
Okay, thank you. I've—I've seen numbers on the internet, so even for a four-door vehicle, it's—it's quite an astounding sum, far more than, say, a new engine would cost. Okay, so the solar panels sound to be worthwhile, but what are some of the other projects? What other types of energy delivery? And are the costs of a new electric substation factored into any of the calculations?
Ms. Fox, do you have answers to any of those questions?
So there are a variety of energy efficiency projects that the town has implemented over the years that have saved on the order of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Again, I don't—I don't have those specific projects. I can list a number of projects that we've completed, including insulation and various weather-stripping activities, heat pumps, and the like. And as far as—excuse me, the second part of your question?
There was a—any thoughts of the, like, an energy substation upgrade?
This—so I just want to acknowledge that infrastructure upgrades with electrification are going to be required. I don't think this is something that anybody at the state and regional level is denying. And there are plans in place—the utilities are actually required to report to the state every five years with electric sector modernization plans. So there's a lot of planning underway to understand what the scale of those upgrades will be and what the cost will be. And that will be borne, you know, across the ratepayer base. It wouldn't be just borne by Arlington residents. But there—those reports are publicly available, and I'd be happy to share them directly with you.
Okay. The state is—is actually working right now on trying to mitigate the shock consumers have gotten from the increases in distribution and other charges on their utility bills. And I'd like to see the town be more proactive on helping Arlington taxpayers. So I—I'm gonna vote no on this. I remember back in the day, there were rebates offered on a car, like a Pinto, and people were led to believe that they would save money with this rebate. But in fact, it just hooked them into a car that had lower liability. In the end, they spent more on maintenance and other costs, notwithstanding the rear-end collision fire damage and potential—
Well, we're not gonna get into the scope of the Ford Pinto.
So I'm just saying that sometimes offers—you know, capital offers and proposals, promotions from the state and other sources are maybe Trojan horses. So vote wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're at 9:31, so let's take a break. And there are snacks over to the side, and I think it's—it's from—provided by the Minuteman students. Is that correct? So, yeah. Okay, so, okay, we're gonna take a recess for 10 minutes. Okay, we're resuming now. Let's go. Mr. Moore, you have the floor, and then followed by Michael Ruderman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Moore, Precinct 14, and Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, but speaking for myself, not the committee, because the committee has not met on this— for myself, not the committee, because the committee has not met on this article. The thing I'd like to say in this article is to separate two flows of money. One of the things we get when we invest in, in some energy properties anyway, and a solar panel is a good example of that, a solar array is a good example of that, is we get savings because we generate electricity, electricity and we use it. And therefore, the operating budget saves money for not having to buy it. That flow of money is not here. That just happens over in the operating budget and the town saves money. There's another group of flows of money that can happen for energy projects, and those are the rebates and incentives and other things that are offered typically by the state or the federal government, or sometimes by the utilities. That's the money we're talking about. It's usually less than what we're saving from, say, generating, actually using the energy that a solar panel will generate. And those rebates and incentives are there to essentially make the net cost to entities like the town go down, so we're more likely to make these kinds of investments. Now, it seems like the easiest thing in the world would be if they would pay us those incentives at the time we're buying the thing, and so we could just, you know, net it out. And unfortunately, that's not how it works. The incentives usually show up a significant period of time after we already made the purchase. And one of the ways to think about this revolving fund is it gives us the opportunity to make the cost of these things, which are usually capital, the net cost rather than the full cost. So without this article, the cost of these property, of these energy investments to the capital plan is just the full cost because the rebates go somewhere else. If we capture those rebates and bring them back to other capital projects that are centered around energy efficiency, then over time, we essentially create a situation where the net cost of the capital plan, and therefore the town, is the real net cost after all of those incentives. And that helps us make more of these kinds of investments. So if you're looking to make progress on the town's contribution to global warming and all the bad stuff that comes along with that, I think this is a really good thing. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Take Michael Ruderman, and then Christopher Loretty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Ruderman, Precinct 9. I'm going to vote against this, and here's why I think you should too. One of the things I've been, been called on by, by town meeting members from time to time, whether it's formally or informally, is a quick vocab session before, before the year's meetings begin, you know, what, what do these things mean? Revolving fund, some of the more arcane terms. It's, it's, it's fun. It certainly doesn't, doesn't require any more study than, than having attention during articles, especially not after, somebody reminded me tonight, the shocking 25 years that I think I've been privileged to be a member of this meeting.
Mr. Rud, just a, a quick note, can you step like an inch or two away from the microphone? Because I think it's popping a bit. Thank you.
Sure. So what I've learned in town meeting, revolving funds, what I've learned in town meeting on anything will never come close to what Mr. Worden has taught us on, from all of his years of experience. I won't live long enough to serve 56 years. Even if I did, I will not have his. But anyway, on revolving funds, this is not the way revolving funds are supposed to work. A revolving fund collects small amounts of money related to services that a, a budgetary unit, let's call it, a financial tub, charges, you know, copy fees at the, at the public library, go back to the public library for copy machines, rental fees for a town building that's used for functions and weddings, go back to that building, not the general town, but that building because that building has its own costs. And these, and these costs are used to, to, well, in some cases, to reward the entrepreneurship and, and addressing the needs of the public, and also to make sure that, you know, that service can continue to be provided. But if we look at the rebates and, and other, other, you know, monies returned from energy-saving purchases, we're taking a large chunk of what we do as the town, not as an individual budgetary unit that is receiving some money for the services it provides to the public, but we're saying, this money is different. This money should be sequestered. This money should be back in the control of a, of a particular budgetary unit. When we know from all the advertisements and all the ways these things are, are exhibited to the public, that the rebate, or the reduction, or the, the money that you get back from purchasing this energy-saving device, we've all got it in our heads ahead of time. It's just a matter of spend it now, get back some of it later on. It's part of the purchase price. And we all know that it's coming back as part of the purchase price. So it should come back to the same source that expended the money to begin with. And I would say that is us. I would say that that is our control, that's our money, that should come back to us. It is not intentionally deceptive, but it serves to obscure the money that we have at disposal, say, of the Capital Planning Committee. If they adhere to their typical rule of, of using 5% of the town budget for capital purchases and expenditures, wait, we saved a little bit of money on that electric school bus over there. Oh, we got some money back on those solar panels. Well, we knew we were going to get that money back, we figured it into the overall purchase price, but it happened to come in a separate check. And it reminds me of something, something somebody once told me at work, you know, when, when I started, you know, employment for the state, said, make sure that your reimbursements for your out-of-pocket expenses, your expense money, make sure that goes to a different bank account. I said, what? Why should I separate that? Well, it'll be money that you expend on mileage and stuff like that, but you get a separate check, so your wife will never find out what money you got in your pocket for your own purposes. I thought, okay, that's not only unnecessary and borderline deceitful, but it's not the way things should be happening. This is not what revolving funds are to be used for. It's not supposed to be an accumulation with a, in a particular town budget that, you know, simply because of the nature of, of the work and the expenditures and, and the functions that they serve, gets to recoup money back under its own budgetary pocketing authority without having to go to the general fund, to the budget, to us, to make the decision on how it should be spent. I ask you to vote no on this article.
I think we'll take Christopher Loretty, and then Eric Helmath.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Loretty, Precinct 7. I'd like to begin with a question, and that is, if the town votes this down, will it in any way prevent the town from receiving any rebates or refunds on these types of projects?
Mr. Feeney, do you have an answer to that question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Feeney, Town Manager. No, it will not.
Thank you. I don't want to repeat too much of what Mr. Ruderman just said, but to me, the fundamental difference between this fund and the other enterprise funds, and I don't see it as like the others at all, is that virtually all of those other funds are funded with fees. They're not funded from general tax revenues, or refunds from general tax revenues, or rebates from the general tax revenues. They're not funded by the taxpayers at large. You buy a grave at the cemetery, that money goes into the cemetery enterprise fund. You rent an athletic field, it goes into the field fund. It's the users of that service that, you know, that are benefiting from that enterprise fund. And I would argue that it should be the taxpayers that benefit from the benefits of, of these types of projects that you all have voted on. The other problem with this type of fund, I, I see it as, as a matter of moral hazard. If there's, if this fund can only be used for funding these types of projects, they won't get the, the degree of scrutiny, scrutiny they deserve, or the degree of scrutiny they would get if they were competing with all of the other, either capital projects, or even all of the general spending that the town does. And I think that's where, you know, the money comes back, that's how it should be considered. And I'll be voting no on this article and ask you to as well. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Great, thank you. Eric Helmath, and then Daniel Jalcat.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Helmath, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12, a member of the Select Board, but I am speaking entirely for myself. The Select Board brought this article forward and suggested it to Town Meeting, I think as a reflection of what we perceive to be Arlington's values and its commitments, and this body's values and commitments over many years to decarbonization, to electrification, to climate control, to climate policy, that is progressive and is a recognized leader in the state. And just a few days ago, on May 5th, Lieutenant Governor recognized Talia Fox on behalf of the town and Arlington, and along with just 18 other communities in Massachusetts as climate leaders, the first class of its climate leaders program. Towns and cities who have gone over and above and made serious investments and made this work a priority. That reflects not only Talia's work, and she is amazing, as you've heard tonight, and how good she is at this, but the support from the whole team, the town manager and past town managers, and support from this body who have said over and over again, this is important. What I would say to you is the question you need to ask yourself with the concerns in, from previous speakers, is this fund is limited to $250, $250,000 a year. Do you trust this team that has served the town so well and made such smart investments? Those electric school buses are beautiful, and it was mostly paid for by other money. We used seed money to leverage those funds. So do you trust them to spend up to that much a year? Or do you want to try it for a year? Because Town Meeting can come back. Town Meeting still is in control of these funds. Come back in a year, and if those funds have not been spent wisely, Town Meeting can make that change. You're still in control. What we're asking you to contemplate is can you give the, the people who have such vast and deep experience and proven track record of making smart decisions to keep Arlington at the forefront of this work, can you trust them to try to, a new program that's a little bit different, but still has strong financial controls and allows the town to be flexible, to be nimble, to not have to rely on, on the fixed 12-month cycle of, of a budget, to see if we can turn even more of this flax into gold? Right? So that's, I think, the proposition before you. I know that for myself, I have no problem at all trusting this team sitting behind me that is behind this good work. I encourage the meeting to give this a year for this modest amount of money and see what dividends it can pay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Great, thank you. Daniel Jalcat, and then Annie LeCourt.
Daniel Jalcat, Precinct 6. I move to terminate debate on this article and all other matters before us.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate on all matters under Article 7, which is just the main motion, and we have a second. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 7, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. That brings us to a vote on the main motion under Article 7, which we'll bring up in a moment after I describe what we're voting on, what you're all voting on. This would amend Title 1, Article 22. Remember, this is in the supplemental Select Board Report. If you're looking at the original Select Board Report, you're looking at the wrong recommended vote. The vote that we're looking at here is to amend Title 1, Article 22 of the town bylaws by appending to the table in Section 5, authorized revolving funds, to add a new row to that table. So let's bring up a vote now for the main motion under Article 7. Okay, voting is now open. If you're in favor of that change to the town bylaws, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no. This is a majority vote. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes, 170 in affirmative, 34 negative, and 3 abstentions. That takes us now to Article 26, which we had gotten underway late in the evening on May 5th, one week ago, if you remember. Can we bring up the speaker queue to that? We do have a backup photo from my phone of the speaker queue if we need it, but let's see if we can bring up the live speaker queue from Article 26. This is a bylaw amendment concerning the Transportation Demand Management Plan, and we have the main motion, which was the recommended vote of the Select Board, and then the Boeduan Amendment, which seeks to amend that in relation to a mention of a cargo bike. Let's see, does this, this looks like it matches my screenshot, so yes. That's right. I believe we left off with Mr. Jalcat, who moved to terminate debate, and that failed. There was a challenge. It turns out I was right, and the debate was not terminated. And that brings us to Joanne Preston, and then JP Lewicki. Ms. Preston, are you present?
She passed.
She passed, okay. Mr. Lewicki. And then after Mr. Lewicki, we'll take Mark Rosenfall.
JP Lewicki, Precinct 2. When I think about this article, I think it comes back to what we've chosen to value and how we want our community to look. In a lot of past surveys of the town, when you ask people, what are your priorities? Where would you like to see more housing? What's important to you? What we hear kind of time and again is that they, they prefer development to be concentrated along the main corridors of the town, where there's bus service, bike lanes, lots of small businesses, and that's, that's what the MBTA Communities Process kind of ended up with. And so when, when it comes to transportation demand management, I think that really supports that vision. We, so basically, in the course of, or what transportation demand management is, is it's something where, when a development is happening, a builder can ask for an exemption or a reduction in the normal number of parking spaces. That, they'll propose a number of different steps they'll take, the stuff like adding parking space for bikes, charging rent for parking spaces, all of those things to kind of bring down the, the likelihood that the people living there or working there, in the case of a commercial space, to, to reduce the likelihood that more parking will be needed and that it will add more traffic to the town. Now, I think that's usually a win-win when that happens because they're taking these steps to reduce, reduce demand for parking, but then if the, if the appropriate board reviews their application and determines they have a, a good enough implementation of it, then the parking will be lower, and that in itself will actually reduce the amount of, of traffic. It will reduce the number of impermeable surfaces we have throughout the town. In some cases, the lots can be difficult to develop, and having a little bit less parking can actually increase the chance you get up to six units or beyond, where, which is the threshold where inclusionary zoning provision comes into place, you'll have one affordable unit. I think also when you're looking at how transportation band management was originally introduced, when we were mostly looking at large developments right on Mass Ave, subject to redevelopment board authority, with the addition of the Neighborhood Multifamily District, we now have this kind of much smaller set of developments, usually two or three parcels off of Mass Ave or Broadway. For those, it's not really the same capabilities that a larger landlord or large commercial development can do. They don't, I mean, if you look at like the existing transportation man management provisions, there's a bunch of stuff that's targeted at employers, like that they're going to provide, encourage their employees to have subsidized bus passes, et cetera. So I think with the, what these provisions will do is they'll increase the chance that, that we'll get development exactly where we've been asking for it, concentrated along Mass Ave and Broadway, with access to the Minuteman, with access to bike lanes. I also am glad to see some of the proposed amendments and some of the new options, the Boeduan Amendment, that would... would add an option for cargo bikes. I think that's the sort of thing that if you have a new development and there isn't a way to have a cargo bike there, if you're a young family that's trying to move into the area, that might be the difference between needing two cars and only needing one, needing one car and not needing one at all. Also, the provision to add charging for electric bikes and scooters as one of the options for reducing parking, that's also very helpful. I think they're, even though they're not the answer for everyone who has accessibility issues, there are a number of people where they're not going to be using a bike that has, or they've got a directly pedal, but having an electric scooter or an electric bike really can enhance their mobility and open up a lot more of the town to them. So I encourage you to vote yes to the Boedouin Amendment and to the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Take Mark Rosenthal, and then Jill Kudjuski.
Mark Rosenthal, Precinct 14. For many years, there was a very nice Greek deli called Christos at Lake Street in Mass Ave. About a year before they went out of business, I spoke to the owners. They told me that they used to get a lot of business from people driving by who just stopped in on the spur of the moment. But then Arlington turned the entire block into a no parking zone, and Christos' business dropped significantly. They decided it was time to retire. I also used to get my hair cut around the corner on Lake Street, and the guy who cut my hair was constantly complaining about the renovation that was going on in Mass Ave because people couldn't park near his, near his business. So they stopped coming, and his business dropped significantly. Article 26 is called Transportation Demand Management Plan, which for those of you who remember the George Carlin evolution of language, where he traces the phrase shell shock from the First World War to, what's it called now? Oh, can't think of it. But basically, you know, they use ever longer language and, you know, softer sounding language to disguise what they're really doing. What this really should be called is not Transportation Demand Management Plan, but Kill Arlington Businesses. Also, before we interrupted the speaker's queue on this article last week to discuss appropriations, an earlier speaker argued in support of Article 26 by claiming that the 77 bus runs every 30 minutes all day long. I recently needed to go from Lake Street to near the Highland Fire Station, and I stood at, by the bus stop for about 15 minutes, and the 77 didn't come, so I decided to walk. I spent about an hour between the waiting at the bus stop and then walking on home, and not a single 77 bus passed me. The MBTA's schedules are, at best, aspirational. Anything, anybody who really needs to depend on the 77 coming, coming every 30 minutes, you know, is not living in the real world. And furthermore, there are actually places that some of us need to get to that aren't on the 77. What does an Arlington resident do when they need to get from Arlington to a doctor appointment in Waltham and then to another one in Cambridge? 77s are not going to be a lot of help. As a matter of fact, there are places in Waltham where you can't get there without at least a half hour to 45-minute walk from the nearest bus stop. So let me also address the, one of the amendments, the Boedouin Amendment for dedicated cargo bike parking. Since I heard that in the last week, I got curious, and I just started making a mental note of what types of bikes I saw as I traveled around Arlington. During that time, I counted approximately 20 ordinary garden variety bicycles and exactly one, count them, one cargo bike. I also looked at the cost of regular bikes and cargo bikes on the web, just out of curiosity, and the price is what tells the story. Regular bikes range from a few hundred to about 1,500. Cargo bikes, they start at about $2,000 and go all the way up to nearly 10,000. No wonder there were so few. Providing dedicated parking only for cargo bikes will just take space away from parking for regular bikes and other more common modes of transportation. So I strongly urge you to vote no on the Boedouin Amendment and also no on the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take Jill Kudjuski, and then David Pretzer.
Jill Kudjuski, Precinct 21. First, I would say the Boedouin Amendment, I would vote yes on, because I do think when we think of our town values, we want to track different families, and I think adding the cargo bikes to the amendment makes a lot of sense. With that, I would actually vote no on the main motion, and here's why. I think it's really a town value, as this previous speaker said, that we have diverse families and economically diverse families. It's an important piece of that. While I think in a perfect world, public transit would be of value to people throughout the economic spectrum, reality is, it's not. And reality is that people that work in trades need to have access to parking, need to have vehicles. In my own family, I'm an educator, and unless I was to work in Arlington, I need to be able to commute by vehicle. And these are the types of people we're trying to provide housing for. So in my own family, my husband is a service tradesperson, and he always has a home garaged car. That's his only way to work. That is the way he needs to work, and there is an environmental impact to that. So if you have companies that are having people garage their cars at their home, your tradespeople are traveling less to get to your house to fix your cable or fix your appliances. And so I think we have to think about parking with more nuance. And while it is important in the long term to support public transit and to support alternative modes of education of transportation, that's not where we're at. And if we really value having economic diversity in this town, we need to have the ability for people to park vehicles and drive vehicles to provide the services we need. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take David Pretzer, and then Paul Selker.
David Pretzer, Precinct 17. I just wanted to make some restatements. One thing to keep in mind is that this, all this is potentially reduce parking minimums in some cases. It does not limit the ability of a builder to build parking. I think in many cases, because of the conditions of building loans and other things, it's likely that we'll still get at least one parking space per residential unit. So this is not like preventing builders from building parking to the extent that there's demand for residents to park. And then, aside from that, there's already lots of housing in Arlington that comes with one or more parking spaces. You know, Arlington is not at any risk of having, of having a glut of parking-free residential units. This is just providing opportunity for some more housing diversity, so that people who can't drive or don't want to drive are not forced to effectively pay for a parking space they don't need. For people who do want to rent or buy a place that comes with parking, there will continue to be opportunities for that like there are today, that just provides greater housing diversity. In a few cases, when the builder asks the Arlington Redevelopment Board to build less parking than they otherwise would. I think this is a very small incremental change that, you know, provides more walkable neighborhoods, in some cases, without dramatically changing anything about the town. And so I encourage you to vote yes on the amendment and yes on the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take Paul Selker, and then Guillermo Hemlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I also rise in support of, oh, I'm sorry, Paul Selker, Precinct 9. My first time doing this. I also rise in support of both the main motion and the amendment. I have three small anecdotes about why, but first, I just want to observe that my reading of this is that it's actually very modest. I mean, we're talking about a subset of new developments that are smaller than 3,000 square feet, which I think many people would say that those are the sorts of developments they most want to encourage as opposed to very large ones, and this is one way to do that. But, but leaving that aside for a second, my three anecdotes, and I know the plural of anecdote is not data, but I still think that it's interesting. My first anecdote is that I tried to rent a parking space. I have two extra ones at my house. My house is a block from here. I failed. I tried to rent it for $100 a month. $100 a month I tried to rent it for. I did not succeed. I, this to me suggests that the demand for parking is actually quite low for overnight off-street parking, which, you know, when I talk to people about this and other parking matters in town, there's this sort of unspoken assumption that there's actually lots and lots of demand for overnight off-street parking. If that were so, I would expect that I would have been able to rent my parking space, but I wasn't. Just, just an anecdote, but I thought, but I thought it was interesting. And then the other, another similar conversation I had was with a friend I run with sometimes, and he was really concerned about the loss of parking, off-street parking in town. And we started talking about it, and it came out that he actually, his family actually had four cars at their single-family residence, and were using their neighbor's parking space, two of their neighbors' parking spaces for free, for a fifth car that sometimes came, and then for visitors, which struck me that the implicit value that their neighbors assigned to their parking space was zero. To me, those two anecdotes just suggest that we shouldn't be excessively concerned about allowing people developing small buildings to loosen the parking restrictions that they're under. You know, if we really were in a situation where we were suffering for lack of off-street parking, neither of these things would have happened, or at least they would have been much, much less likely to happen. And then the last thing I'll say very briefly, I live on the same street as the dental building, which many of you probably have seen when you walked out of this door. And I think about the dental building a lot because, well, because I walk by it every day, taking my daughter to the playground. But, but I think about how it would feel like a really good candidate for workforce housing above it. It's a single story. I believe the exterior is load-bearing brick. Like, you could put some apartments on top of that, and that would be good for a lot of people, small apartments. There's a bus stop right outside. But, and I have no affiliation with the dental, dental building. I don't know why they haven't done that, but I suspect that the reason they haven't done that is because it's non-conforming. It occupies the entire lot. If you were to put apartments on top of it, you would have to demo a big chunk of the first floor for parking, which no one wants. It would reduce commercial space. It would reduce the available buildable space on top. And I feel like a project like that, to put an apartment on top of the dental building, would be exactly the sort of thing that would be enabled by this warrant article. And I think most people, when they think about a project like that, think it's the sort of apartment construction that we would want, even if, even if you're the sort of person who balks at a very large building. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Do you offer your space for rent Mondays and Wednesdays during May? Or?
I mean, anyone who is interested is welcome to see me. I realize that there may be some sort of permitting implications to this suggestion.
Yeah, I'm asking for a friend.
Yeah.
Thank you. Barry Jasper, and then David Brecht. Okay. Caroline Murray. Ezra Fisher. Michelle Phelan. Michelle Phelan. Audrey Robert Ramirez. Anne Fitzgerald. Okay. John Heard. We have a taker.
John Heard, Precinct 18, motion to terminate debate.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate, and a second. All those in favor of terminating debate on all matters under Article 26 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no. Debate is very terminated. All right, so we'll bring up a vote on the Boedouin Amendment. Before we open voting, I'll just summarize. It's adding parking for cargo bicycles to the list of transportation demand management methods in the list of the recommended vote. And so if you're in favor of making that change to add that entry, then you can vote for this amendment. Let's bring up, let's open voting on the Boedouin Amendment. This is a majority vote. If you want to add parking for cargo bicycles to the list, press 1 for yes. If you want to leave the list not amended, then press 2 for no. 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And the amendment passes, 158 in the affirmative, 42 in the negative, 4 abstentions. And that would now go to a vote on the main motion before we open that. This, the main motion, the recommended vote would amend Section 6.1 to, of the zoning bylaw to add an exception for projects with limited residential units and with limited commercial space, and adding three now, because it's amended, three items to the list of transportation demand management methods. So this is the recommended vote of the redevelopment board amended by the Boedouin Amendment. So it's open voting now on the main motion of Article 26 as amended, Okay, five seconds to get your votes in. Okay, let's close voting. And the main motion passes, 155 in the affirmative, 49 in negative. That takes us to Article 27. So let's, let's switch over to the speaker queue. And I believe Mr. Revlack, are you still leading us off?
Yes.
Oh, yes, clear the speaker queue. Okay, the queue is now open for Article 27. Ms. Emery, welcome back.
Point of order.
Point of order. Yep.
Aaron Holman, Precinct 6. Mr. Moderator, I have a question. If an article was defeated one year by an electronic vote, can it be resubmitted the following year? Or is there a waiting period?
I believe that applies to citizens, articles brought by citizen's petition. Did you have a specific, like, did you have a question specifically about Article 27?
Yes, this is the same as Article 28, which was defeated last year. So I question whether it should be before us at all.
Yeah, Mr. Cunningham, do you have context on that? Was that essentially similar action that was being undertaken, and was that a citizen's petition or otherwise?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Town Council, and thank you, Mr. Holman, for the question. I did get back to you, it was this evening though, so perhaps you didn't see my response by email. I know you asked this question last week. The answer is yes, it can be before this body again this year. And as I wrote in my email, there's a relevant section of Chapter 48, Section 5, that says, "No proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw which has been unfavorably acted upon by city council or town meeting shall be considered by the city council or town meeting within two years after the date of such unfavorable action unless the adoption of such proposed ordinance or bylaw is recommended in the final report of the planning board." Because in this instance, it's recommended in the ARB's report, it can be before this body, it is probable before town meeting this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, and speaker queue is open for Article 27. Ms. Emery? Ms. Zenberry, you have the floor.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Zenberry, Chair of the Redevelopment Board, and I'll be taking you through Warren Article 27, an amendment of the zoning bylaw related to the deletion of the Inland-Wetland Overlay District. Next slide, please. The Inland-Wetland District was established before the state adopted a Comprehensive Wetlands Protection Act, and Conservation Commissions were given the responsibility and authority to protect wetlands. Deleting the Inland-Wetland District will not create any gaps in wetland protection. The responsibilities that the Inland-Wetland District was meant to cover are already managed by the Conservation Commission and other existing regulations. The Inland-Wetland District is outdated, redundant, and in some cases, not usable due to inaccurate definitions. Not only is it not usable, the overlap in jurisdiction between the zoning bylaw and the Conservation Commission is confusing and detrimental to overall wetlands protection efforts. Multiple town entities agree that the Inland-Wetland District should be deleted, including the Conservation Commission, the Redevelopment Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Department of Planning and Community Development, and the Inspection Services Department. Next slide. The amendment for this warrant article includes, next slide, text related to the deletion of the Inland-Wetland Overlay District. The Redevelopment Board voted 5 to 0 at our April 7 meeting to recommend favorable action on Article 27. To go into much greater detail, I'd now like to hand the podium over to the town's environmental planner and conservation agent, David Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Morgan, environmental planner and conservation agent for the town of Arlington. As the environmental planner, I'm responsible for facilitating the town's long-term vision for environmental issues, and as the conservation agent, I'm responsible for staffing the Conservation Commission. Could I see the next slide, please? I want to note that the purpose of the Inland-Wetland Overlay District is fivefold, and those are on the screen now. The Wetlands Protection Act, the state law that Rachel referred to earlier, and our local Wetlands Protection Bylaw at Article 5? No, it's Article 8, Title 5, sorry, goes much further than that. There are considerably more purposes that those laws address, and they include water quality issues, habitat protection, wildlife protection, and more. Next slide, please. You'll see there that the map of the Inland-Wetland District doesn't exist. I want you to sort of picture a map of Arlington in your minds, and there is no jurisdictional area on it. That's because the definitions of the Inland-Wetland District are inconsistent and contradictory. There is no feasible way to map the Inland-Wetland District. For example, at 582A, in the Inland-Wetland Overlay District, definition, we rely on elevations as significant to the definition of wetlands, which is ecologically, scientifically, and legally not the case. We define those using soils, vegetation, and other characteristics of the landscape, but not elevations. At 582C, we refer to the depth of the groundwater table, the depth to the groundwater table, as one of the definitions for where the district should apply. There is no feasible way to evaluate that metric. It is a very site-specific, scientific endeavor to evaluate the depth to groundwater, and as I have recently learned, it is very difficult to determine even on one site, the level of the groundwater. I think this next point is a very important one, that this is a duplicative and, what's the word I'm looking for? Well, let's call it contradictory again. Measure. The definition at 5862 outlines development conditions that actually conflict with the state building code. And that development condition is that the first-floor elevation of a habitable building shall be four feet above the groundwater table. And if you check the building code, we have floodplain regulations that differ from that evaluation. Indeed, it doesn't have anything to do with the groundwater table. I want to emphasize that the process of achieving a special permit under this district is duplicative in the sense that if you seek and are awarded a special permit, your conditions under that permit are very likely to reflect the Conservation Commission's permit that is also issued for your project. We do this for 40Bs. Friendly 40Bs are ones that are amenable to receiving the town's local bylaw and regulation stipulations, and that frequently happens with the Conservation Commission when it falls within our jurisdiction, that those are reflected, those conditions of the permit are reflected in the special permit. And we do likewise. The Conservation Commission's permit reflects special permit conditions very frequently so that everything is consistent. And the last point on this slide is that the incorrect and inconsistent definitions sort of confound the permitting process. I've already described that, so I'll move on. Next slide, please. The Conservation Commission is usually the first in order to issue a permit, and so having wider jurisdiction than this district means that we are capturing more projects, we are applying more conditions to those than it would be achievable under this district. The Inland-Wetland District overlay is unenforceable as is for the reasons that it lacks definition, the development conditions conflict with other law and regulations, it includes performance standard, it actually includes no performance standards, excuse me, by which to evaluate wetland impacts. So it was a highly ineffective tool for the purpose that it was intended. And I will say that some land use regulations, as zoning would seek to do, could be thoughtfully developed, but this is not that tool. Environmental design conditions, et cetera, those could be something that this body, the ARB, ZBA, could discuss, but this is not the place for it. And I think the final slide. There we are. This summarizes the jurisdictions of the Inland-Wetland District compared with the Conservation Commission. As I've said, we have more and better conditions or protections under the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, and outlines some of the other points. With this final 20 seconds here, I will just point you to the last row, where the protections are very limited under the Inland-Wetland District overlay, and much more robust under the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's switch over to the speaker queue, and we'll start with David White and then Aram
David White, precinct 21, member of the Conservation Commission. We've reviewed this, and our view of the Conservation Commission is that this overlay district serves no purpose whatsoever. It predates the wetland protection laws that we enforce. So it's basically serves no purpose and potentially confusing. So we should remove it from our bylaws.
Thank you. Aram Holman, followed by Christopher Moore.
Aram Holman, precinct 6. I have a question.
Actually, first, before you give your question, can you step a few inches away from the microphone? Yeah.
Like that?
Is that better for folks? Yeah. When you get too close, it starts to like pop, the sound.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Your question?
I have a question. This brings in, and I hope you will not rule me out of scope, there is also an Article 5.7 floodplain district, which, if you look at it, seems to substantially overlap with 5.8. Is there a reason that 5.8 is being proposed for deletion but not 5.7, given their similarity?
Is there reference to the Inland-Wetland Overlay District in the other section that you cited?
Yes, 5.7, and again, this is something separate. 5.7 floodplain district, the purpose is, of this article substantially overlaps with 5.8, which is being proposed for deletion. There similarly are a description of boundaries of a floodplain district, applicability, and a number of other things. I can't provide a word-by-word comparison, but they're substantially similar. So that is my question, why is 5.7 not being proposed for deletion? One possible, I'm wondering if this is a case of, we already have 5.8 overlapping with the WPA, and you forgot, somebody forgot about 5.7, or is there something about 5.7 which is still relevant?
Thank you for the question. So perhaps we can get a subject matter expert, perhaps Ms. Zenberry or Mr. Morgan, and to keep this within scope, let me just rephrase the question a little bit, to start with. Is there, is there anything in Section 5.7 that would be problematic being left, given the recommended vote of the Redevelopment Board, and also the scope of the article, which is limited to Sections 4, 1, 2, and 5.8 of the zoning bylaw? Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Ms. Roderick. David Morgan, environmental planner and conservation agent. The floodplain district is required by state law. It is what makes the town eligible for the National Flood Insurance Program. It's a very important program for residents to be able to make flood claims if they are impacted by stormwater or other flooding. There is no reason for comparison between the two, really. I'm sorry, could you restate the question so I make sure I address it?
Sure. Is Section 5.7, I believe is when you cited Mr. Holman, right?
Yes. The question is, why is 5.8 being proposed for deletion for reasons I understand, but not 5.7 similarly?
Actually, let me rephrase that within the bounds of scope. Is there any, is there any content in Section 5.7 of the zoning bylaw that, if left as is, would be problematic in any way or intersect the deletions being done under the recommended vote of the Redevelopment Board?
I see. No, it would not.
Okay. I think anything beyond that, we're starting to pass the bounds of scope, because it sounds like there's no issues with leaving that reference in there. Do you have any further questions, Mr. Holman?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Moore, and then Roderick Holland.
Christopher Moore, precinct 14. I move to terminate debate on the article.
Okay. We have a motion to terminate debate, and we have a second. All those in terminating debate under Article 27 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no. Debate is terminated. So let me summarize the vote, and this is a two-thirds vote, and after I give the summary, we'll open voting. The main motion seeks to amend the zoning bylaw in these three sections. Amend Section 4.1.2 overlay districts to delete Inland-Wetland District. Number 2, delete Section 5.8 Inland-Wetland District. And number 3, renumber subsequent sections accordingly. You have to look at the details in the vote language, I'm just summarizing. So let's, let's open voting now on the main motion under Article 27. Voting is open. If you're in favor of those amendments to, those changes to the zoning bylaw, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed to those changes, press 2 for no, and 3 to abstain. And the motion passes, 193 in the affirmative, 10 in the negative, two abstentions. It is a two-thirds vote. That takes us to Article 28. Can we show the speaker queue, please? And I'll invite Ms. Zenberry back up to introduce Article 28. And so when this gets cleared, you may now request to speak under Article 28. Ms. Zenberry, you have the floor.
Hello again. Rachel Zenberry, Chair of the Redevelopment Board. I'll be taking you through Warren Article 28, an amendment of the zoning bylaw related to the definition of lot coverage. Next slide. The term "lot coverage" is used repeatedly throughout the zoning bylaw but is not defined. The Inspection Service Department typically applies the definition of building coverage whenever lot coverage is used. The Zoning Board of Appeals requested that a definition of lot coverage be added to the bylaw, formalizing ISD's practice, and collaborated with the ARB on the proposed text changes. Article 28 adds the definition of lot coverage, which refers to the definition of building coverage. It does not create a new definition or make any substantive changes. It was recommended to retain both the terms "building coverage" and "lot coverage" in the zoning bylaw, to avoid making mistakes in changing the text and to remove, just to remove one term, and to facilitate defining the two terms differently potentially in the future. Next slide. The amendment for this warrant article includes, next slide, text related to the addition of the definition of lot coverage. The ARB voted 5 to 0 at our April 7 meeting to recommend favorable action on Article 28. And the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Christian Klein, is here this evening to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zenberry. And so this was held from the consent agenda from the first night by Andrew Fisher. So, Mr. Fisher, I'll invite you up to lead off debate, and let's show the speaker queue. And then after, Mr. Fisher, I will take James Fleming.
Pass.
Mr. Fisher, you pass? Okay. James Fleming?
Pass.
Pass. Okay. Seeing no more speakers in the queue, we will proceed to a vote on the main motion under Article 28. This is a two-thirds vote, and I will summarize the vote first. This would amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 2 definitions, by inserting a definition for lot coverage that refers to the definition for building coverage. So let's open up voting now for the main motion under Article 28. Okay. And a reminder that the threshold is two-thirds. Okay. Voting is closed. And it passes, 191 in the affirmative, 5 in the negative, one abstention. It is a two-thirds vote. That takes us to Article 29. Let's switch over to the speaker queue, and when this is cleared, you'll be able to request to speak under Article 29. Ms. Zenberry, why don't you lead us off?
Thank you, Rachel Zenberry, Chair of the Redevelopment Board. I'll be taking you through Warren Article 29, an amendment of the zoning bylaw related to parking in residential districts. Next slide, please. This article stems from a request from the Zoning Board of Appeals, who proposed that Section 6.8.10A, parking in residential districts, be organized and reform- Section 6.8.10A, parking in residential districts, be organized and reformatted to increase readability and amended to provide clearer guidance. Article 29 provides clarity and ease of reference for applicants, including the conditions under which a second driveway may be allowed, including the requirement that the safety of motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists must be considered, and the requirement to preserve protected trees as defined in town bylaws. In an effort to provide additional clarity to applicants, Article 29 also adds two new dimensional requirements. The first is that the distance a driveway must be from the intersection, from an intersection, which is 20 feet. And the second is the required height and width of required vegetated buffers, which is variable based on location within the lot. Article 29 also proposes a new, non-exclusive list of factors focused on traffic circulation and safety for the ZBA to consider when deciding whether to allow a second driveway. Next slide. The amendment for this warrant article includes: reorganized text and text related to the distance a driveway must be from an intersection. Next slide. Reorganized text and text related to the required height and width buffers. Next slide, please. And text related to a list of factors for consideration focused on traffic circulation and safety. The ARB voted 5 to 0 at our April 7 meeting to recommend favorable action on Article 29. And the Chair of the ZBA, Christian Klein, is here to answer any questions on this article.
Thank you. Let's switch over to the speaker queue, and we'll take Lynette Culverhouse and then Christian Klein. Christian Klein. James Fleming.
James Fleming, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, I wanted to get clarification. It seems like there are currently a couple cases where, because we have this vagary in the bylaw, where you might have to apply discretion. One would be for by right cases where the ZBA doesn't review it and ISD reviews it. The other case is where the ZBA does review it because there's some degree of special permit that's required. What I was wondering is, could we get clarity on what current practice has been, not what the policy that's being proposed here is, but what they've actually been doing in practice?
Mr. Klein, or is Mr. Champa here?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Champa? Can you tell us what Inspeccional Services does in practice in this case?
Yeah. Mike Champa, Director of Inspeccional Services. What is the practice as far as?
As far as how large of a vegetated buffer on the side of the driveway?
Historically, it's been an 18-inch buffer.
Okay. Thank you. And then, Mr. Moderator, same question, but for what the ZBA practices have been.
Mr. Klein, can you answer what the Zoning Board of Appeals decides on this question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christian Klein, Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals, town member, Precinct 10. So what the board does, we typically see, it's comfortable for us when it's a question of a second driveway, it's typically when this arrives before us. And what we try to do is to ensure that we have a buffer of some kind that's vegetated between the driveway and the adjacent property line. We try to get it as wide as we can. Understanding in Arlington, it's very difficult to do that at times, so we do try to get about 18 inches, if that's the bare minimum that we can all get between the buffer and the house. We, in a 10-foot setback, a 7.5-foot driveway allows for a 2.5-foot buffer, and so that would be our preferred, especially if there's not any other vegetation except for grass that's going into that area.
Article 29 or 30?
Article 29.
Wait, Article 30 is a part of the bottom stretch?
Different, different buffers. This is residential buffers, the other is commercial buffers.
Too many buffers?
Too many. So we would prefer 30 if we can get it, but we understand that, given the nature of the town, it's often difficult, and so 18 is sort of the minimum. But if it's going to be 18, we want it to not just be grass on the ground.
Okay. So it sounds like, sorry, I think that's everything for you. Thank you. It sounds like, Mr. Moderator, that the, depending on who's reviewing your case, that the requirement may actually be different. So one thing I think I would like to do is, I'd like to make a motion to strike the part of the, the motion where it specifies a 2.5-foot buffer and make it 18 inches in all cases.
Let's see. I'm just looking at the vote language here.
Is it where it says 2.5 feet?
Yes, I don't have it in front of me. I'll take you at your word.
Okay. So the, yeah, so it's part E, it's, Section A, Part 1, Subpart E, as in Edward. There are three references to 2.5 feet. And are you looking to amend all of those references?
Yes, to make them 18 inches, or 1.5 feet.
Do you point of order, Mr. Jamison?
Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. The first one recommends is a width. The second, 2.5, is a height. And the third, 2.5, is a height. So I think those should be considered differently. I think Mr. Fleming's intent is the first one.
The width. Okay, just the width.
Yes, just the width.
Okay. So 2.5 feet. So third, like, and do you want to change it to?
To 1.5. The same language as?
One, just change the width to a minimum of 1.5 feet.
Correct.
And I believe, was there a second? I think there was a second. Can we shout out another second if there was one?
There's a second. It's less than 2.
Oh, I see.
There's a minimum.
Oh, so the, it's the first, the first two of the three references are in reference to width. I see. And so both of those would have to be changed to 1 and 1, from 2.5 feet to 1.5.
If it's 2.5 feet and width 1.5, I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. All right. So now that I've clarified, it would be like the first two references to 2.5 feet would be replaced with 1.5 feet. And we have, do we have a second on that?
I have it here.
Okay. So that amendment is now before us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll take, you have that, Ms. Brazil? I'll say, okay. Ed Tremblay, and then Andrew Fisher.
Ed Tremblay, Precinct 19, and a person who does residential snow plowing. I'd like to point out that if you have a 10-foot wide driveway and, or 10-foot wide setback, that you're trying to keep your driveway within, and you have a 2.5-foot buffer, that that really, the math doesn't add up with an 8-foot plow. And since a fair number of residential people with plows have 8-foot or 8.5-foot plows, it might be a little difficult to plow the driveway. The other thing I might want to point out is that, depending on how the building is with all of this, you might have a little trouble getting the doors open on the car, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Fisher, and then Carl Wagner.
Andrew Fisher, Precinct 6. Would this change have had a bearing on the new driveway that's going to be opened up on, at the bottom, near the bottom of Gray Street?
Are you referring to the Fleming Amendment or the main motion?
Pardon me?
Are you referring to the Fleming Amendment specifically, where the, the main motion?
The main motion.
The main motion. Let's see. Are you asking, like, in practice, or are you talking about the interpretation of the, like, the zoning bylaw, or how it'd be actually decided in practice by the Zoning Board of Appeals or Inspeccional Services, or?
When the, when the process happened where the driveway was approved or disapproved on Gray Street, at the corner of Gray, for the lot at the corner of Gray and Pleasant Street, would this change in the bylaw have affected the ruling on that?
Like, from an inspeccional point of view?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Champa, do you have an answer to that?
Yes. And is this change being made in part in response to that situation?
Mr. Champa, can you answer whether that, how that might be decided?
Mike Champa, Director of Inspeccional Services. Are you referring to 149 Pleasant Street?
The corner of, I don't know the number. It's at the corner of Gray and Pleasant Street. The house is going to be knocked down.
I believe that was a special permit through the Redevelopment Board.
Okay. Ms. Zenberry, do you have context on that?
No. Rachel Zenberry, Chair of the Redevelopment Board. No, this would not have had, had bearing. The, the special conditions may be altered for those types of dimensional requirements in, with a special permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Wagner, and then JP Lewicki.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 15. I rise to point to the fact that even as we get to 11th-hour decisions, these kinds of decisions on zoning are very important. I don't know if it's a two-thirds vote on the main question, but the amendment is a 50% vote, as they always are. And I really think the body has to be careful when we're talking about people's properties or their rental places they'll be living, their driveways, et cetera, that'll make big decisions for long, long times. And I would ask you to support the wise decision of the main motion of the ARB, which I support. And just because I have no idea about the amendment, and it's a 50% vote, I ask you to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. JP Lewicki, and then Roderick Holland. It's a majority vote on the amendment and two-thirds on the main motion. Mr. Lewicki, go ahead.
JP Lewicki, Precinct 2. I rise in support of the Fleming Amendment. I currently live in a single-family house in Precinct 2, but before that, I lived in a two-family in East Arlington. And I think I have, had a very common setup there at the time, where you had two driveways, both in the side yard, both right side by side. It maybe, it might be non-conforming under the existing bylaw, but perhaps with a vegetated screen, it would have come under the, the kind of current wording. But basically, there are, there are a number of properties already that have had existing driveways right next to each other. And I support the Fleming Amendment because it's bringing, it's keeping us kind of with the current interpretation of, of stuff. I think it's really good to clarify the way the zoning bylaw works and to kind of have the wording be simple and up to date. And it seems a little unwise to expand the requirements when we're not really sure whether it's going to kind of affect existing driveways, or like, kind of, maybe your house was conforming before under the old interpretation, and now it wouldn't be. So kind of, I encourage you, just kind of keep the status quo and vote for the Fleming Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Take Roderick Holland, and that's likely to be the last speaker for tonight.
Roderick Holland, Precinct 7. I wish to call the question.
Okay. We have a motion to terminate debate, and we have a second. All those in favor of terminating debate on all matters under Article 29 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. That brings us to, one second. 29. So that'll take us first to a vote on the Fleming Amendment, which replaces the references to 2.5 feet in width in, in Part E to 1.5 feet. And so if you're in favor of amending the main motion with that change, you can approve the amendment. So let's open up voting on the Fleming Amendment that was offered from the floor tonight. Okay. Voting is now open on the Fleming Amendment. If you're in favor of making that change to the main motion from 2.5 feet to 1.5 feet in width in Part E, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, to leave the main motion as is. Okay. Let's close voting now. This is a majority vote on the amendment to the main motion. And the motion fails. 82 in the affirmative, 101 in the negative, 9 abstentions. That takes us to the main motion under Article 29, which is the recommended vote of the Redevelopment Board, which seeks to amend the zoning bylaw in Section 6.1.10, location of parking spaces, subsection A. And it is not amended. This is, this is the recommended vote of the Redevelopment Board. So let's open voting now on the main motion under Article 29. This is a two-thirds vote. 10 seconds to get your vote in. Okay, let's go ahead and close voting. And the motion passes. 168 in the affirmative, 24 in negative, 5 abstention. It is a two-thirds vote. Are there any motions? There is a motion to adjourn, but before we take that, do we have any notices of reconsideration? Ms. Deschler?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. I give notice of reconsideration on Articles 50 and 55.
Okay. Notice of reconsideration on Articles 50 and 55. Okay. We had a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Yes!
All those in favor of adjourning say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no. We are adjourned. We'll see you again Wednesday night. We'll do it all over again.